Good evening, welcome to February 29th, 2016, regular meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, if we could have the roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Baldini. Commissioner Kambenzi.
Here.
Commissioner Conley.
Here.
Commissioner Frazier. Commissioner Plurd.
Here.
Mayor Protem Reynolds.
Here.
Mayor Campana.
Here. We have two Commissioners missing today. Could we have a motion to excuse? Commissioner Conley?
I move that we excuse the absence of Commissioners Baldini and Frazier from tonight's meeting.
Second? Commissioner, Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Passes five zero. Next, we come to agenda changes. Do we have any agenda changes? See, and none, do we have a motion to approve? Protem Reynolds?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second? Commissioner Conley?
Second.
All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Passes five zero. We come to announcements. The only thing I don't have, I have but one announcements, and that is, of course, our usual, we do have openings on many boards and commissions and committees for the city, advisory committees. If there's people out there, if you would like to volunteer an hour or two a month to help run the city and offer your suggestions, we'd be very happy to have you step up and do this commitment. Not that difficult, and we'd love to have you do it. Okay, moving on to boards and committees. We have some appointments. We have John Norberg, the Marquette Housing Commission, for term ending 7/9/17. Erin Andries, Planning Commission appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals, for term ending 2/15/17. And we have Gary Moran to the Board of Zoning Appeals for term ending 2/15/18. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that we appoint John Norberg to the Marquette Housing Commission for a term ending July 9th, 2017. Erin Andries to Planning Commission, Planning Commission appointment of the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending February 15th, 2017. And Gary Moran to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending February 15th, 2018.
Commissioner Conley?
Second.
Any comments? See, and none? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Zero. Motion carries five zero. Okay, next we come to public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight. First public hearing. It's a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance 635. City Clerk, if you could give us the background, please.
Thank you, sir. Background, when ordinance number 628 was adopted in July 2015, a clerical error was present in the short title that went unnoticed until recently. This error needs to be amended to reflect the intent of the recommendation of the Planning Commission regarding the proposed zoning ordinance amendment. Draft ordinance number 635 is a corrected version of the proposed amendment correcting a clerical error by eliminating the reference to general business in the short title and reference materials and replacing it with the correct reference as central business. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, conduct a public hearing and adopt ordinance number 635. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
Okay, we're going to open the public hearing. If anyone wishes to address the Commission on this item, please come to the podium in front. You have three minutes. We need name, address, and city or township. Does anybody wish to address the Commission on this item? Anybody wish to address the Commission? See, and none, we're going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Conley?
I move that the City Commission adopt ordinance number 635.
Sir, second. Commissioner Plurd?
I second.
Any discussion? See, and none? All those? It is a roll call. This would be a roll call vote because it is an ordinance. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Kambenzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Plurd?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes. Passes five oh. Okay, now we come to our second public hearing. This would be the Mobile Food Vending Ordinance, number 624. City Clerk, could you give us the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Background, historically, mobile food vendors have been permitted to operate in the city of Marquette under permit on private property and in conjunction with special events permits. In response to requests from a vendor, the City Commission has expressed interest in development of a mobile food vending ordinance that would permit mobile food vendors to operate on public streets and public property. The Downtown Development Authority facilitated multiple public sessions to gather community input as well as the opinions from local restaurant owners and mobile food vendors. This public input was reconciled into a draft ordinance based upon two very similar ordinances that have been successfully implemented in the state of Michigan and provide for equitable operation of mobile food vending. Should the Commission desire to move forward with this ordinance, it also requires elimination or amendment to specific sections of the current city code due to conflicting provisions related to licensing, operation, and insurance requirements. The city attorney and staff has submitted necessary code changes to be addressed under an upcoming ordinance. The proposed ordinance was introduced at the Commission's February 8th, 2016, meeting and approved as recommended to move the ordinance forward to the February 29th, 2016, meeting. Fiscal effect, the fees and location of vending units being recommended have been researched and developed by city staff with input from local restaurant owners and mobile food vendors. Approval of resolutions for fees and parking areas will be necessary if the ordinance is adopted. Recommendation, conduct a public hearing to consider adopting the Mobile Food Vending Ordinance, number 624, and related resolutions for fees and parking areas. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
Okay, we're now going to open this public hearing. If anybody wishes to address the Commission, now is your time. You have three minutes. We need name, address, and city or township. Does anybody wish to address the Commission?
Good evening, my name is Richard J. Rhodes. I live at 9090 US 41, Scandia, Michigan, County of Marquette. I am the proud owner of Seniors Food Truck. Over the last couple of years, I have had the privilege of doing business in the city of Marquette. With that being said, after reading the proposed ordinance that you're proposing to pass, I think we're closer to where we need to be, but I still don't feel that we're there yet. A couple of the questions that I did had in the ordinance is, we're required to carry a $2 million liability with the city of Marquette as one of the insured. My question is, are any other businesses required to do so? The extra $1 million in liability for me and anybody else that carries it would require a rider, which would, again, increase our cost to do business, somewhere in the neighborhood about $600. I still have a problem with the, it specifies 25 feet from any intersection or driveway, and I just see that being problematic down the way. Another item that I have, a question is, it's 150 feet from any brick and mortar. Now, is that a physical location from truck to the building itself, or is that property line? A property line? And another issue, I do notice, it is good that we're going to be allowed to do business on some city property. I was just wondering why Mattson Lower Harbor Park was excluded from any type of business. To me, it seems like one of the more safer spots because of the parking. It's kind of off the flow, and it would work well, I think, for that purpose. Another question that I also had too was, it says that this was developed by the city staff with input from local restaurant owners and mobile food vendors. To my knowledge, I'm one of, I'll say two, possibly three, food truck owners in the area. I have never been contacted, consulted, as far as any input on my behalf. I did attend the two town hall meetings that they had at the Commons last year. Anyways, it would be my wish that the Commission still take another look at this. I think we really need to get some sort of a committee together, include myself and maybe Mr. Walker, restaurant owners, and whoever. Like I said, I think we're closer to where we need to be, but I still don't think we're there. So anyways, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else wish to address the Commission?
Good evening, my name is Nicole Durley. I live at 419 Jackson Street in the city of Marquette. I'm currently the chef de cuisine at Lanyap Cajun Creole Eatery, and I'm also here representing Don Durley, who is out of town right now. I'm very happy to be included in these open conversations. I think you all have done a great job thus far. I do agree that it is a good resolution ordinance, but it's not quite great yet. A few points to make. Under Section 5, duration and non-transfer ability, or for Section 6, application, it was discussed with the DDA at the meetings to set a limit on the amount of permits that we could issue each year, possibly start with five. We can't just think about the present with a few food trucks, but we must consider the future where there could possibly be many. We also express concerns to the DDA at the meetings that it should be written into the ordinance that this should be reviewed yearly, so that we can see what works and what doesn't, and do a yearly review of this ordinance. Under requirements, number eight, there needs to be a written limit on how far away from the food truck the owner can set up tables and chairs. Currently, it says they cannot provide this within 10 feet of the mobile food vending unit, but how far away can they go? Right now, they could take up as much space as they need. And finally, resolution under, for operating locations. I strongly urge the City Commission to rethink the locations, numbers one through five. As a downtown employee and someone who also pays $25 a month for a DDA parking pass, these parking lots are already full, especially the South Main Street lot. That is where a majority of downtown employees park, and a majority of our guests park too that visit downtown businesses. The North Main Street parking lot is also always full with customer parking. And if a food truck that is nine feet wide and 36 feet long was to park in a parking lot, it would actually have to take up four parking spaces. And so business owners are a little concerned that if a food truck parks in these already full parking lots, that there'll be less spaces for not only the employees of these businesses who pay for the parking passes, but also less spaces for customers to visit our businesses, making the downtown a little less accessible. Thank you very much for your time, consideration, and hard work on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the Commission on this item?
Good evening, I'm Scott Stanley, 428 Cherry Creek Road. I'm the owner of a new food truck in the area called Wild Blue.
Township?
Marquette.
Township?
Or actually, Chocolat, technically.
Even better, thank you.
I'm sorry, getting used to this. Just relocated up in Kansas City, and glad to be here in the market area. I had the opportunity to set up one day down in Matson Park at the end of the Polar Roll event. And had a chance to look over and talk with Mike a little bit about the proposed ordinances and everything. And I like what I've seen. It's a really good step in the direction, we're opening up so we can actually have food trucks in the streets and being able to come to the areas. I think a lot of the wording, they talk about the downtown sections, a lot of this opening up is we're talking about from the 10 to 2 windows. So we're not really looking for when you have your core shopping times or your lunch rushes or so. So it's more of your nighttime opportunities, because your lunch crowd is going to be a lot of other places that you really want to set up for. So it's not that shopping window that you're looking for at that point in time. On the insurance perspective, I agree that we need to carry the $2 million insurance and the $1 million individual accident riders, because we are out there, we are providing a service, and I am aware that other restaurants are required to carry the same type of liability insurance coverages as well. So those are very good points to have in place in this article. So I am in support of this, and I'm really glad to see the Commission moving forward and to get something out there. So we, I really want to see the streets open up. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else wish to address the Commission?
I'm Mike Walker, live at 345 Alga Street in Marquette, and I literally just want to say that I think the ordinance looks good. I'd like to see it move forward as such. I really have no complaints about it in any direction. That's all.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Commission?
Good evening, Yorin Malankinen, 8 Market Drive here in Marquette. I'm not a food truck owner, and I never want to be one, but from a consumer's point of view, I would prefer to have not exclusivity in Matson Park. If I'm visiting Matson Park, I would like to have more than one food truck available for my cuisine, and so why restrict it to one vendor that has the contract with the city of Marquette that's on Third Street? Everybody should have that opportunity to be at Matson Park, to, for us, to be able to partake in their services and goods versus just one individual. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the Commission?
Hello, Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Road here in Marquette, Michigan. Again, I'm also a consumer, and after listening to every proposal so far, I'd actually, I'd like to see the city come up with areas, and I don't necessarily mean the one through five parking spaces, but like, the Matson Park concern, we have a diversity of food trucks. Let's not let one take over the only space that's available around one of the two or three different spaces that are permissible. It would be nice to see something set up where three or four, and as there is a limit request, even seven food trucks all around, in one spot or another, because having the space to sit down and enjoy your meal allows you to have a group of people enjoy the meal together. So if there's more than one truck there, more than one person can have a variety of foods, and you can actually try different types and have a more of a communal food experience, instead of a quick run-in, grab your food, and run back out and go back to work. So it'd be nice to see large areas opened up for either weekends or specific timelines throughout the year. I would personally love to see it open throughout the whole year. I mean, wintertime, right now, I'd love to go out and actually grab one on a sunny day. Technically, we have a lot of snow on the ground, so we don't have a lot of room for most of these places. But I hope I'm not taking up too much time. As a consumer, it would be nice for the city to open up larger areas so more trucks can actually partake in the same venue system. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the Commission? Anyone else wish to address the Commission? See, and none, we're going to close this public hearing. Commissioners, we have a motion. Commissioner Conley?
I move that the City Commission adopt the Mobile Food Vending Ordinance, number 624, and related resolutions for fees and parking areas.
Do we have a second? Protem Reynolds?
Second.
Do we have any comments? Commissioner Conley?
First of all, I'd like to thank the city manager for bringing this back. It's been comatose for about a year and a half, when our previous city manager tried to lay it to rest, and I think we've needed it for a long time. I think we need to keep in mind that perfect is the enemy of good, and that the last clause in this whole ordinance is that it will be reviewed in a year. I had some concerns myself about noise, about cables and cords and all that, but I think we're going to really have to take a look at it a year from now and see how this all works out. In terms of limiting the number of permits, I don't think that's really the role of the City Commission to limit the number of competitors. I think that's going to sort itself out. The issue of Matson Park, it can be, Matson Park can be used by special permit. We do have a vendor there that pays the city a fee for that, and any one of the food truck owners can bid on that. It's a year-to-year type of arrangement if they want the Matson Park business. So I don't think it's for us to step in and get in the middle of that. I do have a question, there was a question about the, there's a minimum distance for the tables, city manager, do we have, there was a question of how far out can somebody set up a table from their food truck? And also, the question about distance was, is it from the corner of the truck to the corner of the property line or the building? Or, well, I know downtown, almost the same, but is there anything, any specifics there? I believe the reference was to number eight, Section 8 of the requirements, and that states shall not provide or allow any dining area within 10 feet of a mobile food vending unit, included but not limited to tables, chairs. And that's purely designed so that the vendors don't set up on the sidewalk adjacent to their food truck. I guess I never considered that they might go 20 feet and put a table or something to that effect, but, you know, certainly that's something we can keep an eye on and adjust as we go along. Now, related to the 150 feet from a brick and mortar, even then, we didn't, I didn't consider whether it was front door to front door or property line to property line. I guess for all practical purposes, I would consider probably front entrance to entrance, you know, entrance 150 feet from entrance is what I was thinking at the time that I considered it. But again, that can be clarified as we, if we need to, as we go along as well. Okay, that answers my question. I think we're going to, since we're starting out with this, this is the first, well, not the first shot at it, but the first time we would have enacted it, we're going to have to wait and see and bring some of these concerns back in a year.
Protem Reynolds?
I just echo everything Mike said. You know, that's everything that I, all my thoughts and all my questions, and I think that this is where we start. I think in 12 months from now, when we review this, if there's any problems, and the cops are going to be, the police are going to be watching this and taking care of complaints and determining if there are problems, and if there are problems that arise, just with any other ordinance that we have, we'll be able to address those issues. And there are, and from what I, my knowledge of the vendors in Marquette, I don't think we're going to have problems like that.
Commissioner Kambenzi?
I think the ordinance for now, as it stands, is pretty good. I'd like to see it get put in place. And, you know, one thing with ordinances, you know, this ties us to looking at it in a year, but an ordinance can be looked at any time. So if noise, if anything stands out, we can certainly deal with that right away, or the Planning Commission can. With Matson Park, I guess one question I had, with the special permit, you know, we're only operating in that store or actually allowing someone to operate it during certain times of the year. I'm wondering if we might be able to look at allowing the food trucks to operate down there without a special permit, I guess outside of that time when the store is open. And I don't know if that was looked at, but I don't even know if the food trucks have any interest in kind of grouping down there, but it just seems like, growing up here, I've always watched people bring their lunch down there, go get food, and go sit down by the lake. So I'm just wondering, outside of the time when that park store is open, I'm wondering if we can't kind of waive that special permit fee. Those are my comments.
Commissioner Plurd?
I like the ordinance, I'm going to support it, but I do have reservations as well, and I am a little concerned about the Matson Park resolution or the part that concerns Matson Park. But I think, and I agree with Commissioner Conley and other Commissioners when they say, I think this is something we have to kind of iron out. I would be in phase, in fair, I would be agreeable to taking a look at a committee. I guess what I was going to say is in favor of, taking a look at a committee maybe in three months or six months. I'd like to, if we're going to have a committee, I'd like to say maybe around June or so, we probably should take a look at it, because that's when things are really going to start getting going as far as summertime and summertime activities are concerned. I think a lot of tourists are in the area, so we can really take a look at some of the changes that we may need to make. But I agree, I think we need to pass the ordinance and live with it and see how it works and see what irons itself out, and then find out what we need to deal with.
Thank you. This has been an ordinance, it's been a long time coming, and we put a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of people have devoted a lot of time to this. DDA, the public, the vendors. I would like to clarify a couple of questions. First, the question was about the $2 million insurance. The food truck vendors will have to carry that insurance, and is that the same as the brick and mortar, the restaurant owners? Do they carry a $2 million? Not $1 million, it's $2 million. Same as, okay. To me, that seems only fair. I mean, you're on equal footing there. Second question I have is, how many trucks can be in one spot? Can we have two trucks? City manager, could you answer that? Can we have two trucks side by side, down by the ORDOC?
Sure, if they want to park next to each other. In either case, you know, the parking laws still apply. Where there is meters, they still have to feed the meters. Where there's two or limited or limited parking, they have to follow that. I guess I'd like to just also comment that, you know, a lot of this is going to fall on the shoulder of the police department to keep an eye on, and I would be happy to ask them to pay special attention now that we are coming into the summer season, and probably when these trucks will be more active. And certainly, we can, I can make regular reports back to the Commission as to how it's working out and how it's going. But yes, your short answer is sure, they can park next to each other if they want, as long as they don't fight with each other, they're fine.
No food fights. You know, the whole, the whole object here is you got, it's a new item, it's a new venture for everybody, so of course, there's going to be questions. My last question, and it's, Commissioner Kambenzi mentioned it, that Matson Park is basically off limits to them, unless, of course, they have a festival going on, they're allowed to be there. We do have, it's an ice cream shop down on Matson Harbor, basically ice cream, they may have other items there. The person who's running that, which I believe to be Vengos, did not want to see a food truck there. Good or bad, that's what she wants. I can kind of understand that. I would like to see, personally, I'd like to see a food truck be able to be down there when they are not open. I'm not sure what their hours are. They're not there right now. I mean, a food, why can't a food truck be down at Matson Harbor right now? Hardly anybody there, of course, but like, for the polar roll, a lot of people down there. And there might be, the dog sled races came in there. I would, personally, if I owned a food truck, I'd want to be down there. So I would think, why can't they be there if the ice cream shop's not open? That would be, to me, common sense. I guess we'll have to address that, because we don't have that in our... I guess we'll have to address that, 'cause we don't have that in our proposed ordinance. Overall, I'm greatly in favor of this. I think we really gotta get, we wanna see more food truck. I like the idea of food trucks in Marquette. Hopefully, it complements the great restaurants that we have, and I don't wanna take anything away. I would want to see anything taken away from our restaurants, because the restaurants really bring the people downtown. We have some fabulous restaurants. Commissioners, does anybody else have a comment? Wish to make a comment? Seeing none, we're gonna vote on this. It's gonna be a roll call vote, a one for two. City clerk, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Cam Benzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Plard?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes. Passes five zero.
Okay, next we come to presentations. We have two presentations tonight. Our first presentation is for the UP Children's Museum Guardian of the Quarter Award for Georgia Hummel. Georgia's at the podium. Jim Edwards is at the podium. Do we not want Mother up here? Mother, wanna come up or not? Yes, no, your choice. Okay, we are presenting the Youth Leadership Award to Georgia Hummel, and again, is for the Outstanding Guardian of the Quarter. Now, I could describe it, but I think Jim will do a much better job. Jim, you are better at this than I am.
Mayor, thank you. Commissioners, thank you. It's 19 years now since we opened the doors to the Children's Museum, and in that time, we keep coming back to you with another young person that's volunteering, and over those years, I still can't find another institution that does the same thing. So we have hundreds of children, at the moment, 120-something, who are on our books as volunteers, and we'll see lots of them in the summer from way out of Marquette County, but hundreds, of course, from inside here. And they keep coming. And Georgia came, I think it took, Georgia waited longer to be a volunteer than she's been a volunteer. For a couple of years now, she's been kind of an apprentice knocking on the door, when can I do training, when can I do orientation? And there she was, like a bright shining light, and she took the place by storm. So she's certainly become mother of a few of our reptiles, but her latest initiative I really liked, and it showed a difference in Georgia's approach, she's now, she's now offering free rides in taxis all around the Children's Museum to three-year-olds in push-along cars. So she's got her own business going on here. Storms up to parents, would your child like a ride? No, really? When? Now! Get in! It's much nicer than that when it comes from Georgia. All right? So I think she made a wonderful start, and I'd like to commend Georgia Hummel to you.
Thank you. Georgia, we're very proud to give you this certificate on behalf of the city, the city commission, the residents of the county. It reads, Youth Leadership Award Presented to Georgia Hummel for UP Children's Museum, Outstanding Guardian of the Quarter, February 29th, 2016. My pleasure to see you have this, and I give this to you, I thank you.
Thank you.
And you're gonna go places, do things. I think, would you care to say a few words, you know, a few words of thank you, or what you do there, or how you like it, or why you're interested in doing it?
Well, I like working at the Children's Museum a lot, because I like holding the reptiles and cuddling them, and I like sharing them with little kids.
Very good, very good. Thank you very much. Okay, we come to our second presentation of the night. It's gonna be the Board of Zoning Appeals, and Chairman Justin Vasal is gonna present for us. Justin?
Good evening, everyone. Just like to say, I enjoy serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I like to address a matter that came up not too long ago, where we had a issue where they're trying to change the meeting time. I'd just like to thank the city commission for keeping it where it is. Thank you very much. I think it's easier to recruit people for volunteering and things of that nature. So at this point in time, I'd like to appease the audience and the people at home on TV, as well as the city commission. Information tech can start now if they would like. Thank you very much. PowerPoint presentation. We'll start with some background and things of that nature. Here's the current members of the board, Board of Zoning Board of Appeals. It's a diverse group. We have a little bit of everything on there, I think. I serve as the chairman. I expired, but they kept me on for various reasons, 'cause I like to keep people on. That's cool. Meetings are held on the first Thursday of the month. Additional meetings are scheduled when an applicant requests a special meeting. There are 19 excused absences in 2015, however, alternates, when they can't attend the scheduled meetings to help ensure that seven members are present. Nine meetings are conducted with less than seven members present. There were two unexcused absences. Moving on. We exist primarily because of the Zoning Enabling Act of 2006, Public Act 110, 2006, Section 125.360. His ordinance shall create a zoning board of appeals, more or less follows down from there. Section 80.64 of the City of Marquette zoning ordinance establishes the BZA. Responsibilities, interpretations of zoning ordinance text and map, appeals from administrative orders, requirements, decisions, and determinations, variances from not, from zoning ordinance standards, designate Class A non-conforming uses or structures. So accomplishments of 2015, variances, more or less, we had a mixed bag. Conditional, Class A non-conforming designations, appeals, administrative decisions, or APLs, administrative review interpretations, were pretty much zero. One of the things I'd like to bring to the city commission's attention, as well as anybody else that's currently in the audience, is educational opportunities for board members, i.e. webinars, training. I've attended all these. I think they're very helpful and very helpful for various people that serve on this. It's a very technical board. We get into a lot of maps, a lot of blueprints, things of this nature. Review the bylaws would be another, need to catch up with some various aspects. Fill the vacancies on the board, which as of tonight, we did. Good job. As we currently have three vacancies, moving on. Over the years, the BZA has heard many cases regarding variances that the existing 40-year-old ordinance is causing a practical difficulty. Most existing lots and homes do not meet the ordinance's requirements in regard to the minimum lot width and area, or the front, side, and regard requirements. This map indicates that almost 60% of lots in the residential, general residential zoning district do not meet the current lot width standards. A new ordinance is very important to fixing the issues and the amount of variances the BZA hears. So there's your map, and then, let's see, issues and discussion, the existing ordinance is almost 40 years old. Most existing lots and homes do not meet the schedule of the regulations in the ordinance, as discussed earlier. Recommend the development of a plan for efforts to support public awareness and education with zoning sign ordinance and fence ordinances and enforcement policies. The BZA has heard enough cases regarding ADA ramp placement in front yards to warrant a review of the current standards. Currently, stairs, porches, et cetera, are allowed, encroachments in the zoning ordinance, but there is no mention of the ADA ramps. So I guess at this point in time, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you, Justin.
You're welcome.
The reason they're keeping you on is 'cause you do a good job, so we want you to keep on doing that.
Well, thank you, sir.
Okay, commissioners, anybody have any comments? Commissioner Cam Benzi?
I'd like to thank Justin for your time on the Board of Zoning Appeals and every, everyone else that serves on that, and those two new members that stepped up tonight. One thing I'd like to point out, and this goes back, like you said, 40 years, and when I was on the planning commission, over 60% of the residential houses in Marquette are non-conforming, meaning, you know, their, their structures, whether it's their house or an accessory structure, garage is too close to the property line. Anytime anyone wants to add on, it's, they have to go through quite, quite a significant process, and not only go through the process, but also pay quite a fee to do so. So I'd, I'd like to put on my list of priorities, I know we're getting there, for our commission priorities, to put some money towards helping get our ordinance revised, because I think this is something that, since I got on there in 2007, we were working at it and we're still working at it. So hopefully, by the time I get off of the city commission, we'll have something, something done, so that's all I have.
Any other commissioners? Justin, clarify something for me. Apparently, you say the ordinance, 40% of the city does not meet the ordinance, and I'm assuming that's because, if you could clarify, but I'm assuming it's because the homes are obviously built before the ordinance, and you have odd lots, small lots. So then, when people wanna do things, it's almost like they get penalized for, when they wanna do it, they have to pay to have it done, when really, it was there to start.
Many times in the applicant, when they submit their application to the city, if you will, they have a, they have to demonstrate a practical difficulty, and one of the things that they usually consistently come up with is, the structure was built prior to 1977. I see that many times in my sleep, so it's like, okay, so there you go. That's, yes, that's a very true statement there. That's pretty much what we deal with on a regular basis. And there's no guarantees of approval, too. Sometimes something just will not fit, and sometimes they might be turned down. You know, there's no guarantees of approval. And yes, they do spend a lot of money, survey sketch, application fees, the time, applicant representative to come in, and only to be turned down, or have to come back again with a different idea or something like that. So that pretty much sums up, yes, what you said.
Okay, so if the house was built before 77, it's kinda like, they got a good chance, if everything else is good.
You could, you could say that.
I mean, it's in their favor.
Yes. I mean, it's nothing that they did.
Right.
You know, it's practical difficulty, which is beyond the landowner, the applicant, and things of that nature. It's nothing that they quote-unquote hardship was created by what they did, for whatever it might be, so.
Okay. Commissioners, again, anyone else? Well, Justin, thank you very much. I know you guys are a busy group. You know, we read your minutes and you do, you do a lot, and you do it often, so thank you very much for your service.
Again, thank you. Thank you very much.
Next, we come to public comment. Public comment is when anyone can address the commission. You have three minutes. We would like to have your name, address, city, or township. We are now gonna open public comment. Does anybody wish to address the commission?
Hi, Matt Ludenberger. Oops. Sorry, I'm trying to make sure I get this on record here. Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Road, Marquette, Michigan. I come because I've told myself to only stay positive, and this is one, one statement I've been meaning to make for a very long time. I've spent 10 years now in the city of Marquette, and in my current house, I've spent three years. I would like to say thank you to my neighbor, Rex. He has, without his help, I would never be able to pull into my driveway. I would never be able to shovel my driveway. He comes over diligently after every snowplow that comes by and pushes the snow in the driveways of not only my house, but a couple others. So thank you, Rex. Thank you very much. I can't say thanks enough, and three minutes is just definitely not enough time. Now, the other person I'd like to say thank you to is someone that would like to remain anonymous, and unfortunately, it's because he doesn't know if what he does is legally appropriate or okay. He hasn't had a ticket yet, but that might be because he hasn't been caught. I'm talking about the area between the Presque Isle, or not the Presque Isle, I'm sorry, the area between Pioneer Technical, Pioneer Surgical, RTI Technical, and the Powder Mill Power Plant. That stretch of the Big Bay Railroad, historical railroad, has been plowed by this gentleman for the last five years, and I randomly ran into him a couple times ago on the last snowstorm. He diligently just says, because I love walking my dogs, and because other people love walking their dogs, I will clear out the snow. And there's many times when it hasn't been done, and you just kinda get frustrated of, wow, I'm walking through three feet of snow. So one, if there is a place for a dog park, this would be a great space for it. I see many people use it. Same time, I don't wanna jinx it. Please don't take this free space away from us. We have a lot of off-leash areas on this little strip, and with this gentleman helping me plow the snow and allow us to do four or five dog walks a day, I would just like to say thank you very much, and please, keep doing it, both Rex and the gentleman in the truck. As a commission, please try to find a way to recognize the volunteers that don't volunteer for city commission or appointments. These are people who do this out of the kindness of their hearts, and we have many of them in Marquette. That's what makes Marquette. We, we are kind. That's what I get from all my friends and family who come and visit. And so, in that sense, I would like to take the time right now to say thank you to Rex and the gentleman in the truck, and to the city commission, please somehow acknowledge those who don't wish to be acknowledged for their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission?
Good evening. You're in Malachi Nate Market Drive here in Marquette. Again, I wanna say thank you for fulfilling our housing commission board. We finally have a full board after many, many years, I understand. And also, I wanna say thank you to our city manager, that with our little snowstorm that we had, all the streets were nice and open. Traffic moved really well all the way through, and so we have an incredibly fabulous community that we live in. Everything works. Electricity works. Sewer works. Water works. Everything works as it should, so thank you again for doing everything that you guys do.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission? Anybody else? See none? We're gonna close public comment. Next, we're gonna move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Pro Tem Reynolds?
I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Is there a second? Commissioner Plard?
I second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? None? Passes? Carries? Five zero. Next, we move to the second public comment. Again, it's your chance to address the commission. You have three minutes. Please give us your name, address, city, or township. We're gonna open this public comment. Does anybody wish to address the commission?
Yes, thank you. Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Road. At this point, I would like to, sorry, Mark, 1406 Garfield Road, Marquette, Michigan. You're welcome. Our county is so large, I feel like it's all-encompassing. So I wanna explain the reasons I've come up before, trying to talk about wind power and the electricity, I guess, situation we have currently going on. Because I'm afraid that in the agenda, it just says, I talk about wind power. The reason I talk about wind power is that we have a solar panel system going in that we're clearing trees for, and we're putting a solar panel in a valley. It's no closer to bright sunlight until 10:00 a.m., so I brought in a few maps that I've used for actual data collection. So the first, this is a map of the solar panels, or solar power in the U.S. The blue is on the low curve, red is on the high curve. Makes a lot of sense. South Mich, or southwest seems to get a lot more sun. Same color scheme, but this is the power map for wind energy. And so, we up in the Great Lakes area are bright red and bright orange. So when we have a power company with, unfortunately, a former mayor who was personally involved in raising the rates, we have a power company using non-efficient equipment, and I wonder how we can ask the power company, as a city commission, to provide a percentage of electricity from renewable resources? Make it a 30%, make it a 10%. Right now, I believe we are operating on a 6% or 7% rate. It could be done as a mandate for the city just to be green, without interfering with their plans or their bonds. But I do wanna say, it's really suspicious that both times, the Board of Light and Power has had a has had a bond renewal or bond discussion. We've had loss of power. City of Marquette, two Saturdays ago, in the business district, lost power for an hour. That's nothing to do with the transmission. Our coal didn't die out. We didn't get coal. We lost material or machines that they acknowledge are needing in repair. My point is, we don't need a new coal, or we don't need a new natural gas plant. We need the fix of equipment that is currently here, and utilizing some of the knowledge that we, as a country, have evolved to. So part of me asks the city, is there anything you can do to force the monopoly who creates electricity in our town to produce much of it, or a percentage of it, from renewable resources, separate and far from what they currently have? Please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commission? Anyone else? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment. We are now going to move to comments from the commission. We'll start with Protem Reynolds.
I don't have anything this evening.
Commissioner Kambenzi?
Two things real quick. We had a work session this past week on the new transportation corridor as the hospital comes closer to being built. I think it was a good session. We have four alternatives right now on the table that we were presented with as a commission. I think they're good. I think only one really puts a lot of emphasis on the neighborhood and Seventh Street and all of the people and residents that live there. There's a great editorial in the paper that the Mining Journal wrote, and I do appreciate that they put a lot of emphasis on that neighborhood, too. Right now, having Seventh Street go through, it's great for getting to and from places, but if you live there, it's become a nightmare. And so at the public forum the next day, that was spoken loud and clear by those residents. And when you look at options one and three, one through three, all of those would actually widen Seventh Street, put in a turning lane, and probably increase traffic, is what we were told. So I think we're close. I'd like to see some of those options reworked a little. There are four options, but they're not the only options out there. So we're getting closer to making a decision, and I would urge the community to come forward and share your thoughts as you look at those. They are on our website. Secondly, we are without two Commissioners tonight. Tom is somewhere warm, enjoying a little vacation. And as many of you know, Pete Frazier was in an accident, and so all of us are thinking of him when you serve on a city commission, and certainly one of your members is out. It's almost like one of your family members is out. Whether or not you vote the same way, or you disagree, whatever your differences are, all of us up here, when we're not all here, certainly miss the other Commissioners. So if you could keep him in your thoughts, I think all of us are, hopefully he will be back here with us soon. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Conley?
I echo your comments about Commissioner Frazier, and we hope for his recovery and soon return. We're thinking about him all the time. I had the pleasure about a week and a half ago of welcoming the Fat Bikes Summit here to Marquette, and it was really a lot of fun. These were fat bike enthusiasts that had chosen Marquette as a place to come for their meeting, for their joy of biking. I know they are out on the trails the week before. It really underscores the importance and the economic value of the Hartwood Forest. It brings people who want to stay, they stay in the city, they use our taverns, they use our restaurants in the city, they use our trails. It just underscores the fact that the Hartwood is not an expense, it's an investment. And all these people that come from out of town, really, if they could find a way to live here, would move here to the city of Marquette. So it's an important area, and it was just kind of fun to enjoy it with these folks. So with that, I'll keep the meeting short.
Thank you. Commissioner Plard?
I just want to say I'm glad that one of our citizens, Matt, brought it up, that there are unsung heroes in the city. And I think we all know people who are unsung heroes, and I would like to see us find a way to kind of honor unsung heroes, and maybe I'll take a look at that a little further as we go along, because there are so many of them around. And we do appreciate what they do, and I know some of those people, and I think everybody in here knows some of those people, and they don't do it for recognition. In fact, I know some people that would probably shy away from recognition, but I'd like them to have it anyway, because I really do appreciate that. And it was very, very nice to see Georgia Hummel won her award with the Children's Museum. And I like the description, and Jim Edwards is always very good with that, and I like the description also. So I might find myself going to the Children's Museum just to watch Georgia in action if I can. And I do have some grandchildren that might get a kick out of that. But other than that, yeah, we've got plenty of work to do, and thank goodness after today, it's no longer February.
Thank you. In keeping it short, I do wish the best for Pete. I hope he's listening to us right now. Hope he's back here pretty soon. And in talking about great events, we had the dog sled races two, three weeks ago, and just resounding success again for, you know, the city of Marquette. Just a great turnout. It was very cold, probably our coldest night of the year, but the streets were packed. We, you know, so a good thank you to the organizers, the mushers, the dogs, and especially the volunteers. I mean, without the volunteers, and Marquette's good, Marquette area is good for volunteers. We're, without them, nothing would work. But, you know, for the middle of winter, it's a very great event to have here. Just, it brings people in. We had, oh, legislators all over, up to and including U.S. Senator Gary Nichols. And they had fun here. They'll be back. You know, there'll be more next year than this year. Okay, city manager?
Thank you. I'll try to be brief as well. Just to keep the commission up to date, we are still working and progressing through the lobbyist research. Because this is new to us, we discovered it's going to take a little bit longer than we had originally thought. Commissioner Frazier was part of that committee, but I think we'll be okay should he not be able to continue. We hope to have, and this has probably been off your radar for a while, but we hope to have the Clark Park finalized here in the next couple of weeks. The last piece of paperwork went to Lansing last week. We hope to have a closing final done over with here in the near future. With regard to the DLP and the DLZ traffic, I've planned on scheduling a special meeting on March 17th to address specifically that question as to what particular plan the commission would endorse. The reason that I asked for a special meeting was because of what I consider to be Commissioner availability, and, you know, there are some things happening, and there's people coming and going, and I wanted to have a date where I thought we could have a maximum commission presence when we made that decision. So I've moved ahead with the 17th, and as far as I can tell, it's when it will be, unless something else happens. One last thing. My community office hours won't be this Wednesday, but will be a week from Wednesday at the Peter White Public Library, 10:00 a.m. to noon. And any Commissioners, more than welcome to join me.
We are adjourned.